Good evening. My name's Truckay Oven. I'll be presiding over this evening's planning board meeting, September 11th, 2019. First thing I'd like to do is let people know, for those in attendance, under the provision of the open meeting law, attendees are informed that this meeting is being recorded by M A TV. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. We have two items on the agenda this evening, 84 Linden Avenue and then 91-95 Main Street. Before we get to those and before I ask Ken to read the notices, we'll start with Towadage and if we could identify ourselves, please.
Towadage Gavrisalasi, Planning Board.
Patrick Fitzgerald, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Tanucci.
Ken Tanucci, Planning Board.
Truckay Oven, Planning Board.
Michelle Romero, City Planner.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Henry Suce, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. Ken, if you could read the announcement, give me a second. What's that? Yeah, we're gonna do 84 Linden Avenue first and then we're gonna do 91-95 Main Street.
Mr. David?
Yes.
For good interruption, yes. I wanted to ask the indulgence of the board.
Hold on, that's not on, Pat.
Okay, you should be outside now.
Don't press the button. It's on now.
I wanted to ask the indulgence of the board. I have not had an opportunity to discuss with the petitioner, Mr. Snow, the email I received at about 5:30 tonight forwarded to me by the planner from the building commissioner and its contents. So I'm requesting if we might be called out of order so that I can have a few moments to have that discussion with the petitioner.
Okay, very good. So then the first hearing we're gonna hear is 91-95 Main Street. Ken, if you could read that one.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the auditorium of the first floor of the John and Christina Markey Malden Senior Community Center, 7 Washington Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 11th, 2019, on the petition of 91 through 101 Main Street LLC for a special permit under section 700.1.3.1 of Chapter 12, Revised Ordinances of 1991 as amended of the City of Malden, seeking to allow change of use of a pre-existing non-conforming property in the Residence A zoning district, namely to convert use of the second floor from recreation for gainful business to general office at the property known as and numbered 91 through 95 Main Street, Malden, Mass., and also known as 5 Cross Street, and by city assessor's parcel ID number 078354405A.
Thank you, Ken. Is the petition a present?
Scott Fitzpatrick here for the petitioner, Andrea Sidos of 91-101 Main Street LLC.
Andrea Sidos, the owner of 91-101 Main Street LLC.
You ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The existing property is two separate buildings connected and separated by a firewall. This portion, it's about 2,000 square feet, a little over on the second floor, has historically been occupied as a karate studio. Recently, the tenant vacated the property and the applicant was in front of the board in 2018, looking to combine the buildings, convert the space to residential, add-on. That petition was withdrawn after, you know, getting the feedback of the board. The team went back to the drawing board, tried to figure out a viable use for the property that complies with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. After studying the area and some other successful business models of the property owner, we came up with the plan to develop that second floor into 11 individual offices. The offices range from roughly 80,000, uh, 80 square feet to about 180 square feet. They're basically their single-user offices. We have that model in other properties owned by the applicant. They're a good, uh, they're a good fit for self-employed, small operators in the other buildings we've seen, insurance adjusters, small contractors use it for an hour or two to collect paperwork, home healthcare workers use them to complete paperwork. It's not typically a nine-to-five office is what we've found with this model. It's more of a, someone uses the office a few hours a week, want to legitimize, it's a mailing address, it's a business address for them. They can have a meeting there. They can meet a client if they need to, but it's more just a self-employed person. Typically, they work on the road, might be a realtor, might be insurance, and they just need a place to sit down at the end of the day and do paper, paperwork. We did look at rehabbing the area to keep it for recreation for gainful business. It's set up, there's some columns in there. It was a pretty expensive renovation to eliminate the columns, to keep the existing uses and get a viable tenant in the space. That was the biggest complaint that we got when realtors were showing the space was the columns in the middle when you're trying to rent a karate studio.
Yes, can you describe what you're gonna do to the inside, to the karate? How you're gonna carve it up? Where people are gonna park?
Right, there is no parking on site. There wasn't for the karate and there will not be for this proposal. The parking requirement is the same for both uses, so we're not increasing the demand in the area. If anything, we feel we'll be decreasing it because the karate studio when it was there could have classes of up to, you know, 16, 18, 20 people at a time. With this model, with 11 offices, they're basically single occupant offices, so even if all of them are occupied, you know, we have 11 offices there. And it's our experience with this model that we don't have everyone occupying these offices at all times. We have a similar setup at 40 Eastern Ave. and we never have a parking problem there. The petitioner does own the property at 148 Main Street. That's where his operation is based out of. We have 18 parking spots on site there. His staff is, office staff is 11, so we already have extra parking there that can be offered to the tenants. I know it doesn't count for the required parking in the area, but it is a, um, an option for the tenants in this building. And that office only operates nine-to-five, Monday through Friday.
Eight employees. Okay, what type of renovations are you gonna do? Are you just gonna put up blueboard or?
Um, the space was gutted. We had pulled a building permit. We were, we'd started after the withdrawal of the previous petition. We'd started down the road to renovate and it, um, for, to be rented out as a karate studio. So it is pretty much gutted right now. So it'll basically be a gut renovation, new studs, drywall, updated fire alarm, handicap bathroom.
Central AC.
Yeah, central AC, new mechanicals, everything up to code. There'll be a chapter 34 code review provided to the building commissioner for the change of use and any other requirements.
Will it be sprinkled?
I don't think it triggers the requirement for a sprinkler, but the code review will determine that and it ultimately be.
But there's no plans, you don't have any plans?
There's no plans to sprinkler at this time.
With regard to trash removal, do you, I saw the bins in the back. Do you just put them out on trash, on Mondays for trash day?
Um, each, each tenant on the first floor, they're responsible for their own trash. So they have a private hauler.
Okay.
So one day a week, the private hauler picks up the, the businesses?
Correct.
So what are you gonna provide for the tenants of this? Totes?
Exactly, with JRM.
Would add a tote or two as needed with JRM to.
Okay.
Pick up the need of the 11 offices.
Do you have to put in any special Wi-Fi or 5G or any of those types of requirements to attract people for this?
What I do is I'll have Comcast come in and they'll just pre-wire it for 11 individuals.
For every.
That's what I do with the other building. They're like $49 for the business package. It works.
Okay, no, I was just curious what the, uh, what the technology requirements might be these days.
It's more secure that way, where it's all individual.
Did you shut the water off during the renovation? Is that porta potty out in the driveway?
That is.
Associated because you gotta shut the water off while they renovate?
That is for the construction work, so that'd be gone as soon as it.
And the soda machine will go back up into the unit?
It'll go.
We'll dispose of that.
Oh, you're getting rid of that?
Yep.
And I imagine the hood, the truck hood?
Someone left that there. We'll get rid of that too.
Yeah. Okay, it's just a little inordinate array of items in the back lot.
We'll get rid of that.
From the porta potty to the hood of the truck. How long do you take, think renovation will take place?
Uh, it's gonna take about five months.
Five months? And have you talked with anyone yet about potential tenants? What type, have you, have any, had any agreements yet with anyone or?
Um, they're all individual units and they rent right away from my other model. They can range from, from $450 to $500 a unit and, um, as far as renting them, it'll be very easy.
But there are no signed leases right now?
No signed leases.
Yeah, okay, so no, and that you're in discussion with, that you can share?
Or, but, so only 450 to 500 a month?
Correct. That includes all utilities. If anyone's interested.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? Eric McCush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you feel one bathroom is gonna be enough for 11 units?
We, we had it sized up with the plumbing inspector.
Yeah.
And based on the square footage, it's adequate.
And it's just a bathroom, toilet and sink?
Correct.
No kitchenette area or anything like that?
Uh, there's a little kitchenette outside the bathroom.
Okay, and that has its own sink?
It's, it's own sink and a refrigerator.
Okay.
And a coffee machine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? Michelle, you have some?
Yes, so you're gonna use storage totes for the trash?
Um, I think that would probably be the best thing to use there. You can wheel them out.
96 gallon JRM totes.
So what, what do the people use now? I didn't, I don't think I saw storage totes back there.
Um, it depends on which tenant, but they'll have a private contract to pick it up. It'll be a similar size, 96 gallon.
So no dumpster?
No dumpster.
Okay.
It doesn't call for, it's very light duty.
Okay. And you mentioned something about contractors. Contractors are considered industrial use, so what, what is your plan for that?
It would only be a general office for.
Okay.
Historically, the office has permitted general office contractors for the business purpose in.
So it would only be, you understand it would only be general office? So an electrician couldn't be there and be running his business out of there?
Well, historically, the department has permitted contractors, their, if you wanna call it, their corporate office or their.
Right.
Their paperwork.
Right.
No, no equipment, no trucks, no supplies.
Right. It won't be considered a contractor's office. It would be a general office.
Correct.
Okay, just so we're clear, you're not here for that. And my other question had to do with the stairs in the back. They look pretty rickety.
They're being rebuilt as part of the plan.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, so is that, I know I had asked you about the elevation, so does that change? Is the?
No, it's rebuilt in place.
Exactly the same footprint?
Exactly in place.
Okay, so you are rebuilding those stairs?
Yes.
And is that the only way from the inside? How, how do you access?
Um, there's a door.
One interior stair and one exterior stair.
Okay.
They're both egress to that rare passage.
Okay, so you come down that staircase?
Correct.
But there's also an interior stair.
Two staircases.
That's your two mains of e, means of egress.
And that goes out to Cross Street, the door?
No, that goes out to the, the passageway as well.
Okay, I think I.
They start at remote areas in the building and then they bolt egress into the passageway, which leads to Cross Street.
Yeah, I think I saw that on the plan.
At one end and in the other end, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I jump in one more? Um, I noticed you like a little kitchen area or is that a fridge and a sink?
Correct.
Just a microwave type thing or a toaster oven or something like that?
No coffee machine, probably just a microwave. That's what I did with the, the other building.
No stove, anything like that?
No stove, no.
Yeah, no, okay. Okay, anyone else have any other questions? Eric Henry.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I was curious about the snow removal in the passageway.
We'll, we'll be taking care of that because we own the passageway.
Okay. That issue of ownership, I think, previously came up and there was some convulsion there. Can you expound upon that now?
Last time I came here, I didn't know if I owned it or not.
Yes.
Since then, we did a title search. I brought a copy of it, it's 34 pages. They had to go back 100 years and the passageway belongs with the property and the plot plan reflects that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, anyone else like to ask any questions? None? Do you guys have anything else you'd care to share?
No, I, you know, we're excited and we think it'd beautify the building.
It'd be a good use and a little less intrusive than a karate studio on the neighborhood.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
I have one letter dated September 11th, 2019. It reads, "I write today regarding 91-95 Main Street special permit to change use of the pre-existing non-conforming property in Residence A zoning district to general offices. This property is located in Bell Rock Square, once a historic area. The square is one of the many in Malden that is in need of upgrading. I believe adding business opportunities and general offices in this area of Malden will not only improve the square while not adding to our school population with additional residences. It is most definitely the direction Malden needs to move for, toward. I respectfully ask that this be granted this evening without delay. Deputy Maria Counselor at Large Malden."
Thank you, nothing else to read?
No.
And no one else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Michelle, anything to read in opposition?
No.
Very good. Seeing no one in that would like to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Uh, do you have anything in general to read, Michelle?
No.
Then if you could take us through the staff report, please.
Yes, um, you did hear the petitioner describe this property. This subject property is its own parcel assessed separately. It is joined with the part, the building next door, which is 97-101 Main Street. They have historically been held in common ownership and they're still held in common ownership. The current deed that was submitted with the petition does indicate both properties and this petitioner and the passageway are owned by the same owner. We heard about what the passageway and the debris you mentioned, the plans that have been submitted. I won't read this, but this staff report is incorporated by reference into the record. You see the different plans that were submitted. Terms of zoning, and you have copies of all the plans in your package. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district. The recreation for gainful business use and existing retail sales and services of pre-existing non-conforming use is prohibited in this district under current zoning. The proposed general office use is also prohibited, however, change to, a change may be allowed, there's a typo in there, change to this use may be allowed by special permit. Prior uses of the property have included different retail sales and services offices and restaurants. Most were allowed by special permit as a change of pre-existing non-conforming use. The petitioner mentioned the petition that was before this board back in December of 2018. That was for residential conversion and in addition, this petition is different on its face, so it's not subject to the prohibition on repetitive applications, so it's not subject to the two-year prohibition. The director, so it's properly before you, the director to the south is retail services and general offices, to the east is a furniture manufacturing businesses, and to the west, on the other side of Main Street, are various businesses, retail sales and services, a convenience store, some with multifamily residential dwelling use above. To the north, on the other side of Cross Street, is a retail sales and service use. Surrounding land use is a business residential in Bell Rock Park. In terms of dimensional controls, the building predates the current zoning ordinance and it grossly violates all dimensional controls except height. The property is considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposal maintains all existing violations and creates no new violations. The existing use of the property requires a total of 17 parking spaces. There is no on-site parking. The property is considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposal maintains the same parking non-conformity given the proposed office use and most recent recreation for gainful business use have the same parking requirements. So use of the second floor for either use requires eight spaces. In terms of traffic to impact, the proposal does not require traffic to impact access study under your rules and procedures. The finding to, required to grant a special permit is the change of use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So provided you can make that finding, the recommendation is that a special permit be granted subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, prior to issuance of any occupancy permit for the offices, clear the rear passageway alley of all trash debris and remove portable toilet, maintain clean. Three, outside storage of any kind is prohibited. I would recommend you add, except for, except covered trash storage totes may be cited in the passageway. I think you should also add a condition I would recommend, condition four, no dumpsters are allowed. And condition five, only general office use is allowed by this special permit. This may include corporate offices of a contractor.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle on her staff report? Ken Tanucci.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, we're ready for that or?
Now, why don't we let Michelle read her recommendation?
I did.
She just did.
Yes, I did read it.
So nothing else to add?
I went ahead, no. I recommend the three conditions, number three is amended, um, to say, except, so it would say outside storage of any kind is prohibited, except covered trash storage totes may be cited in the passageway. A new condition, or an additional condition, number four, no dumpsters are allowed. And five, only, only general office use is allowed. What did I say? Only general office use is allowed and may include corporate office of a contractor, which may include.
Okay, and you're okay with that, Ken?
Yep. So, the motion, I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit with the five conditions as read by Michelle.
Is there a second? Eric McCush.
I'll second that.
Eric McCush is second to Ken's, um, motion to approve the staff recommendation with And give me a second. Okay, let me. Okay, if you want to start, Michelle?
Ken Tanucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Towadage Gavrisalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
One second. Hold on. Yes? It's not working tonight.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Suce?
Yes.
Truckay Oven?
Yes. Petition has been granted with conditions. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, it's weird, I'm clicking on it and it's not. I'm trying to cram it with too many people.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the auditorium on the first floor of the John and Christina Markey Malden Senior Community Center, 7 Washington Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 11th, 2019, on the petition of Raymond Snow for a special permit under section 700.1.3.1, Chapter 12, Revised Ordinances of 1991 as amended of the City of Malden, seeking to allow the conversion of a pre-existing non-conforming property.
Thank you.
In the Residence B zoning district, from a multifamily dwelling with five dwelling units to a multifamily dwelling with eight dwelling units at the property known as and numbered 84 Linden Avenue, Malden, Mass., and also known by City of Malden assessor's parcel ID number 050282211.
Thank you, Ken. Um, and I see the petition is present. Give me a second, I will turn the podium on in a moment. Thank you, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Patrick McDonald, on behalf of this petitioner, Mr. Raymond Snow, who's with me this evening and seated behind me in the first row. Also, thank you again for your indulgence in allowing us to be called out of order. This petition seeks a special permit relative to the property at 84 Linden Avenue here in Malden. That property is a pre-existing, non-conforming, multi-dwelling residence, or multi-unit residential dwelling located in a Residence B zoning district. It's currently considered to be a legal five-family dwelling in the city, but is currently being utilized as a seven-family dwelling in the city. This petition does not involve any proposed construction, addition, alteration, or expansion of the structure or any changes whatsoever to the structure, but merely seeks to legalize its current actual use as a seven and potentially an eight-unit dwelling. The petitioner purchased this property in June of 1981 and has owned it continuously from that time until the present. At that time, the property was a legal five, but a previous predecessor in title had actually been before the Board of Appeal in 1980, in May of 1980, and had sought and obtained a variance to legalize it as a seven-unit residential structure at that time. Unfortunately, and for reasons unknown to this petitioner, that successor in title and previous owner never perfected the relief he obtained from the Board of Appeal at that time by recording the variance at the Registry of Deeds. And to this date, that instrument has never been recorded. And as a consequence, it seems very clear that whatever relief had been granted by virtue of that variance has now been rendered moot by the failure to perfect it by appropriate recording. recording. I do know there is some case law in the Commonwealth that has forgiven technical delays in recording variances, but my review of applicable case law suggests that that is a very limited situation. And in fact, in those instances, when the courts have adjudicated that the failure to record in a timely fashion is not prejudicial to the city, and that therefore the variance or special permit involved should be considered still valid, that in those few instances, what we were looking at were modest delays in recording, certainly nothing that would support a contention that approximately forty-year delay in recording has any legal effect. So we do not suggest to the board, nor do we make any argument, that that previously granted variance has any actual effect at this point in time. But I would respectfully suggest to the board that it is an important factual circumstance in this particular situation. That being that despite the failure to perfect the previously granted relief by the courting of the variance, the owner at the time, and Mr. Snow as the owner since nineteen eighty-one, nevertheless has utilized the property as a seven-family dwelling for approximately a forty-year intervening period. And there has been a period during that forty years during which the eighth unit, what I'm referring to on the plans as the basement unit, was in fact utilized as a residential dwelling unit as well. Mr. Snow, although he acquired the property in nineteen eighty-one, did not himself use that unit or rent it to anyone until approximately two thousand and five. And he did admittedly rent that particular unit from about two thousand and five until approximately November of last year. Mr. Snow was actually before the Board of Appeal in January of this year. He had become, as a result of seeking to sell this particular real estate, he had become, unfortunately, aware that he had a serious issue, that being that what he had believed to be a seven-unit residential dwelling was not in fact a legal seven-unit residential dwelling because his predecessor in title had never perfected the variance that was granted by recording it at the Registry of Deeds. That prompted him to initially seek relief from the Board of Appeal. It also prompted him, so as not to further complicate an existing problem, to have the basement unit vacated. So while there is an eighth unit in the building, which I refer to as the basement unit, that unit is not currently occupied and has not been occupied since November of last year, and is not Mr. Snow's intention to have it occupied unless and until he receives the relief that permits its use for that purpose. So I'm suggesting to the board that ideally, this petitioner is asking for approval of an eight-unit residential dwelling at this location, but given the circumstances, if the board is uncomfortable with granting relief for an eight unit but could see its way clear to granting seven, that would certainly be acceptable to this petitioner. I also became aware this evening that Commissioner Nelson has a couple of requests relative to conditions he would like to see imposed upon any grant, if any, of relief granted by this board. Those being, if the board is inclined to legalize an eight-unit dwelling, that the eighth unit, that being the basement unit, be inspected, and he be permitted to confirm that it meets any and all requirements, sanitation, health, safety, building codes, et cetera, that would make it a legal unit. And secondly, that if any relief is granted to extend the legal use from the existing five to a seven or eight, that a sprinkler requirement be imposed as a condition on that. And I have now had an opportunity to discuss both of those potential conditions to any potential relief, and can represent to the board that, again, if it were inclined to grant any relief here, either as a seven or an eight, that those conditions would not be objected to by this petitioner. With, excuse me, with respect to the legal burden of the petitioner, that being that the proposed relief not be more detrimental to the neighborhood, I'd like to respectfully suggest to the board that the uniqueness of this situation is such that I believe we can make a good faith argument that this will not be more detrimental to neighborhood. And I make that statement to this board based on the fact that, notwithstanding the lack of technical legality of the seven units due to the failure to record the variance by the predecessor in titles almost forty years ago, that the property nevertheless has been utilized as a seven family for four decades. This is not the more conventional situation that presents before this board in that you have a petitioner who owns property or is proposing to build a new property and expand an existing use, or put an entirely new use in on a particular lot or in a particular building. In fact, quite the opposite is true here, is that this has been the de facto use of this property for a very, very long period of time. Legalizing this as a seven, or perhaps an eight, I would suggest would result in no change whatsoever to the neighborhood, because it in fact has been how this property has been used for, as I said, forty years at this point in time. To the extent that this property being occupied as a seven or eight-unit multifamily dwelling had any changes that would detrimentally affect the neighborhood, if at all, those changes occurred four decades ago, and have been the norm for this property and this neighborhood for forty years. So I would, again, respectfully suggest that the legal burden, which is that the proposal not be more detrimental to the neighborhood, is met here, and it's met by virtue of very, very unusual and unique circumstances, in that the relief that's being requested is not anything new, but more a simple recognition of what's actually been occurring at this property for a forty-year period, coupled with the fact that the permit granting authority at that time, and it was forty years ago, and it was the Board of Appeals, had approved it as a seven-family unit, and, but for the inexplicable failure of the predecessor in title to record the variance, this would have been a legal seven-family dwelling in the City of Malden for the last four decades. So I take the position that we're not asking the board to allow something new, the effects of which are unknown and speculative at this point in time, but rather, we're asking the board to legalize what has been in effect for forty years, and all of the effects, if any, to the neighborhood have been in existence for a forty-year period. There's nothing that would make the use of the property more detrimental to the neighborhood, because the use of the property as a practical matter is not changing if the grant of this relief is given by the board. So with that in mind, we would ask the board to act favorably upon the petition. And Mr. Snow is available. In the event the board has any particular questions, they might want to address to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor, are you planning on doing any renovations to the building? And could you describe the renovations in a little bit more detail?
There are no renovations planned.
So the wooden ladder for the fire escape isn't going to be upgraded? The aluminum ladder on the left just before the entrance to number seven, some of the, I mean, when I was there on Sunday, it was overrun, it was overgrown with the landscaping.
State your name and your address.
My name, my name is Raymond H. Snow. My address is forty-two Rich Dale Avenue, Somerville, Mass. oh-two-one-four-four.
Mr. Snow, did you hear the chairman's questions about certain conditions at the property?
Yeah. You know, I get problems with my eyes, I get problems with my ears. I heard you saying something about the ladder and all that, but I didn't understand the question, sir.
So what my question is, do you plan on doing any type of maintenance to the existing property?
No, other than fixing a drainpipe, that's the only thing that's on the schedule.
Okay. Is there any plans to remove the sink in the basin that's there, or some of the other materials and debris that's on the lot?
No, no, nothing like that. The lot is clean, has been kept clean, and nothing.
If I could interject, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Snow's representative has indicated that the particular items you just described have been removed from the property at this point in time. And if I could clarify my earlier answer, you asked whether any construction or alteration was going to, my answer to that was no, in the sense that this proposal does not seek to make any changes to the interior layout, exterior foot, nothing like that. But if the board is asking if this property owner is inclined to do certain things that the board feels need to be done to improve the appearance of the property, we're certainly amenable to anything the board is seeking with respect to that. But my response was, I think I misinterpreted your question, Mr. Chairman, that, as I said at the outset, this petition does not seek to change anything.
Footprints or anything like that.
Exactly.
No, no, I understood that, but when I went there, there seemed to be a lot of boards, there were boards that were either loose and bowed out, or some appeared to be missing, or appeared to be some rot or deterioration around the roof line. And as I said, there was stuff outside, out back. It just looked like there was some stuff that looks like it needed to be upgraded or updated.
Well, last year, I spent eighteen thousand dollars on trying to replace some gutters and some fascia boards, just to upgrade it a bit, then we ran out of money, I had to stop. But we do have a company from Malden that periodically, like every month, goes around, makes sure it's raked up and crap is picked up and thrown out. I have not visited the property except to go buy it recently, and from the outside, it looked like the bushes might need a little bit of trimming, but it wasn't bad. We do take care of it, and have taken care of it for thirty-nine years.
Okay, when I was there Sunday, it wasn't.
What did he say?
He said when he was there Sunday, it wasn't, in his opinion, taken care of.
Right.
Well, we were there this morning, I think. Landscape, I think, was there this morning.
Okay. No, that's good to hear, because.
He said that's good to hear.
Oh, thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Mr. Snow, do you own any other properties?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I was under the impression, you know, but when I, when I looked into the hallway and saw the sign posted, I was under the impression that you might have owned some other properties. Where are those located? You don't have to give me addresses, just city.
Somerville.
So you own more units in Somerville?
Yeah, I got three family that I bought back in fifty-nine. And, you know, I had seventy-five units of stuff down Bell Rock and Newman many, many years ago.
Okay.
Which we, providing the city's housing, I think, you know, cheap rents with cheap tenants, but we get rid of all that, that's a long time ago.
Yeah. So right now, how many would you say you own right now?
I got one across the street, Lee Street. I got an interest as a trustee in a piece of property in School Street. What's the other one? My memory's starting to fade, too. Yeah, we have one.
That's okay, you have other units, as I guess.
School Street, Lee Street, and my own house at forty-two Rich Dale Avenue Residence. School Street, what's the other one, Dennis?
That's it.
That's it, okay, that's it.
Okay.
And Malden, that's the third one.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Feel like a dummy.
Okay, Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When the petitioner purchased the property in nineteen eighty-one.
That's correct.
What was his understanding, that it was a seven-unit multifamily dwelling?
His understanding was it was a seven, yes.
And at that point in time, can he say whether or not he received anything during the purchase, or otherwise learned what the legal use was?
Member Fitzgerald is asking if, what your, what your understanding of the status of the property was when you purchased it in nineteen eighty-one, Mr. Snow?
Yeah, we checked the assessors' records, it was assessed at eight units. It was sold, it was advertised as eight units, the bank approved, eight units. And somehow, a question of approving, Mr. Camboris, the prior owner, showed me papers issued by the Board of Appeals, a decision dated May of nineteen eighty-one, I believe, indicating that they were granting the relief from a five to make it a legal seven. But there were five conditions attached to it, which upon completion, I guess, would complete the deal to legalization of seven. When I saw all that information, he then showed me two letters in April of eighty-one from two different departments. Morris Coco was one of the signers, and another one, saying that all of the conditions required have been met. Two letters for code enforcement stuff, and for the appeals requirements. Two letters that said to me everything had been done, so it looked to me like it was all clear. He's got his seven units, and I've been running it for thirty-nine years. You know, I thought it was legal. Some folks came up to me last fall, you know, they send letters out, letters out, we want to buy your property, we want to buy your property. So I said, huh, interested. I'm getting old, I'm getting tired of doing that stuff. So I answered the letter, and the guy made an offer that sounded to me like it was pretty good. And I said, okay, so I signed a PNS agreement. And he ran off to the city, and he found out that, Mr. Snow, it's only five legal units, it's not seven. Incidentally, I always told him, there was only seven legal units. So we found out it was not legal, only five. So I immediately took whatever action I could to prepare a petition to the Board of Appeals. I documented it with, I don't know, ten pages of documents, bank statements, and whatever we had, and they showed up here, January something. It was a cold night. Supposed to have five members, only four showed up. So the chairman said, Mr. Snow, you got about a hundred if you're going to get anything out of this. So he recommended it would be best to withdraw the petition in its entirety and file the petition with the, this board here. So that's what we did. I mean, I said, I'm trying to straighten out forty years, thirty-nine years of error. You know, if the building gets ever burned and somebody gets killed, I would be, you know, liable completely for renting an illegal apartment, but I didn't know it was illegal. I did the best I could in keeping the property clean, what have you.
I was present that night. Just to clarify, I think what happened was, Mr. Snow was advised by the board that, at this point, the Board of Appeal is not the appropriate permit granting authority for the relief he was seeking at the time. So they allowed him to withdraw his petition before the Board of Appeal without prejudice, because the appropriate forum for the relief he's seeking is this board, and that's what prompted the filing before this board.
So now, folks, one, just one more point. As you can probably see, I'm not capable of taking care of the property as well as I used to. I want to sell out and go off into retirement, and sit down and take it easy, pass the money out to my kids for estate planning and call it quits. So I'd appreciate any consideration you might, you might offer or give. And I do understand that early this evening, we received a notice of some kind, the attorney did, indicating that in the event that you were to agree and approve to bring it back to seven, or hopefully to give us eight, there are a couple of conditions that he wants. Our attorney has advised us that it makes all the sense in the world. Incidentally, one of the conditions is involved a sprinkler system, which is an expenditure of probably a hundred thousand dollars, but it's the right thing to do. Safety of all the tenants has always been our goal. Safety of all the tenants has always been our goal. And I have no qualms about taking care of the sprinkler system. The rest of the stuff is nickels and dimes as far as I'm concerned. But I'm concerned with the safety of the clients. And like I mentioned, in all these years, if a fire had occurred in one of those illegal apartments, I wouldn't be here, I'd probably be in jail. Well, I want to make sure that that doesn't happen to the new owner, whoever that new owner might be. I'll make sure that we get that fire system taken care of.
Thank you.
Actually, I have another question. Over the past forty years, what has been the parking situation on that property? How many cars have generally been needed or used on the property with the seven and eight units for approximately twenty-three years?
It varies naturally, but I did specifically ask Mr. Snow at our preparatory meeting, you know, typically, what is he looking at? And his answer was, although there is parking for eight cars on that lot, and we recognize it's not the most ideal layout for parking, but there are eight spaces in the lot, that several of his tenants don't own cars and therefore, frankly, the lot for parking is currently underutilized. It's about four or five people who park on the lot.
Currently, but what about over the past forty years, can he say generally?
Consistently, all these years.
And it is intention to sell it if this?
No question, in fact, again, his need to seek relief was prompted by a potential sale when this, as a result of that, came to his attention. So his intention is to try to sell it, whether he will ultimately, no one has a crystal ball. But yes, he's looking to sell.
Thank you.
Attorney McDonald, if there's, if there's so much open parking space on the lot, why are they parking at the edge of the driveway and taking up half the sidewalk?
Did you hear that question, Mr. Snow?
No, something about the driveways.
The chairman is asking, given that there seems to be ample parking on the lot, that someone is nevertheless parking in the driveway in a manner that extends the vehicle out onto the sidewalk?
Yes, that black Kia that was there.
No, no, absolutely not. If we see that, we'd kick the tire or something. We do not allow that. Obviously, you've got a good wide driveway parking off on the left-hand side. Nobody can park in that middle to block the whole driveway. If we see that, we'd go crazy.
Do you have any personal knowledge of why someone appears to be parking in such a way that their car is at least in part on the sidewalk?
There's plenty, plenty of space in the odds, in the illegal parking spots. I didn't, if I saw that, we certainly would be on that person's case immediately with a letter, tell him, "Don't do that again." He's blocking it for everybody, isn't he? An ignorant, ignorant person. No, sir, we don't allow that absolutely at all. That's a, what do you call it, a vagabond?
Okay, thank you very much.
No, that's not allowed.
Okay, Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney, I was just a point of clarification here. I read here in the finding of facts that the petitioner purchased the property in nineteen eighty-two, yet you stated it was purchased in June of eighty-one?
If I did, I may have misspoke, Mr. Henry. I just wanted to, if I may, just take a moment.
And you're reading from the Board of Appeal decision?
Correct.
Dated December of two thousand and eighteen?
Correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
I misspoke. I have a copy of his recorded deed, Mr. Henry, and it's dated June fifteenth, nineteen eighty-two. So my apologies, that was a factual misstatement by me.
Okay, thank you. It was, been said repeatedly that the current use has been in effect for four decades. I have a little point of contention with that. It seems that the current use has been in use for a little over a decade plus as an eight unit.
Yes, and again, if I either inaccurately stated something or unclearly stated something, the use as a seven has been in effect from Mr. Snow's purchase in eighty-two up through and including the present. The eighth unit, the basement unit, basement unit did exist at the time of his purchase. He did not rent that unit out until approximately two thousand and five. And he rented that from two thousand and five through November of last year. So its use as a seven has been consistent for his entire period of ownership. Its use as an eight existed for about a fourteen-year period between oh-five and two thousand and eighteen, or a thirteen-year period between oh-five and two thousand and eighteen.
Given that, is there a specific reason why the petitioner never sought relief to make it an eight family at that time?
Well, he did. He became aware of the problem in the sense that the variance had not been recorded. It was brought to his attention when he was looking to sell the property in the fall of last year. That was approximately November of last year. So when he became aware that he did not even have technically the legal right to use it as a seven, let alone as an eight, he asked his basement tenant to leave, rendering that unit vacant, and then proceeded incorrectly to seek relief in January from the Board of Appeal. And that's when he was informed by the Board of Appeal that unfortunately, he was not in front of the appropriate permit-granting authority now. It would have been the appropriate permit-granting authority forty years earlier, and it was, but things have changed, and now this board is the appropriate forum for the relief he was seeking. So he didn't bring this petition until the spring of this year, but he sought relief from the board fairly early on after discovering that he had the problem that he didn't know he had.
Understanding that, my question remains, why wasn't permission sought from and granted from the proper authority to make it, to use it as an eight-unit dwelling?
I can't, well, can you answer that, Ray?
I don't think I understand that question either.
Mr. Henry is asking if, why you didn't seek approval, even if you thought you had a legal seven for all those years.
Right, right.
Why you didn't seek approval for an eight at some point prior to now?
Well, I can't say that was completely inadvertent. There was a close friend of mine who'd just got out of jail. He'd been retired from the Medford School Department. He had a DUI problem, and he needed a place to live, so, and a job. So I gave him a place to live and a job by putting him in the basement. I paid him, paid him four hundred and fifty a month, and he was going to pay me back four hundred and fifty a month. But he was going to be like a manager, sweep the halls and all that kind of stuff. I thought about that, I knew I was, I thought it was legal. I knew that was not illegal, but, but it wasn't completely in bad faith. Because a friend of mine who lives in the same neighborhood in Somerville is, was a former public, public, the guy like you, public, you know, in charge of all the housing stuff, inspections, what, building commissioner?
Yes, sir.
And I sent, I asked Michael, Michael Foley, if he would go over and check that studio apartment. And Eddie Foley said, "They have to find out what was wrong with that. Why would they not allow that to be listed as a legal apartment?" I said, "Michael, go." Now, Michael's an authoritative person, not like myself. And he went over, and he came back a couple of days later. And he said, "There is nothing wrong with the measurements of that department. It's got access, it's got egress, it's got the windows, it's got all the necessary stuff. The height is fine, it's a perfectly rentable apartment." So I didn't feel bad about letting this friend of mine move in here as a place to live. And I did think about legalizing it sometime, but I just never got around to it. Inadvertent, whatever you might call it, but I'm guilty of that. But I needed the money, you see, to pay the taxes. The taxes kept on going up, the expenses kept on going up, and the rents were steady. So I said, "What the hell?" And in fact, most of the time, I didn't collect the rent. When the man passed away, I buried him. And he owed me twenty-three thousand dollars in rent, that's five hundred and fifty bucks a month. Twenty-three thousand, twenty-two thousand. So I never collected the rent from the guy, and I buried him as well.
Mrs. Snowden, you're definitely, in my opinion, an honorable man. And you should be commended for your good faith and your good deeds and as such. I've also come across other people with honorable intentions in the city of Malden have done similar things, and when the city got wind of this, they were made to rip out these places. So I'm just, just curious about that, and I'll yield at that. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Thank you. Eric McCush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was at the property yesterday, and if it was cleaned up today, that's good, but it was, it was a mess yesterday. Including a sink filled with water outside, a couple of grills, grass, grass as high as the grills. There's a car parked on the grass around back. I don't know if that's a normal thing, or they normally park on the pavement. But I also noticed on the third floor, there's a landing that goes up to the third floor. And it looks like instead of spindles on the railing, there's a lattice, which doesn't seem sturdy for, you know, that type of egress, if emergency exit, or if it's their regular in and out.
I'm sorry, did you say ladders or lattice?
Lattice.
Lattice. Dennis, can you speak for that, or Ray? On the third floor?
Yes.
One of the...
Where the landing is, it looks like a little porch area?
Was that not the requirement going back to nineteen eighty, eighty-one? That a ladder be fire escape and so forth?
Not a ladder.
Lattice on the railing instead of spindles.
So the railing on the third floor landing doesn't have spindles? It has some kind of lattice?
Oh, the exits or something?
Yes, yes.
Well, that has not been an issue in all these years, nobody's ever raised it. You see, we've had, over the years, I don't think we've had one code inspection for violations based on a complaint. And I do know that the way that is now, I believe, is the way it was way back in nineteen eighty-one. So if the building department wasn't complaining about anything, I didn't think that it should be corrected. I don't know.
And all the units have two egresses? Not, like, rail doors in and out?
All units have two means of ingress and egress, correct?
Every one, even the studio apartment downstairs. It mystified me also. I don't know if I'm boiling anything up here, taking too much of your time. It mystified me way back in nineteen eighty, when the appeals board inspected the property, why they ignored that studio apartment. And the report issued by the appeals department, you might notice, you might have a copy of it, it says neither the petitioner nor any of the members of the appeals board went in to inspect that studio apartment, none. So then why did they only grant seven instead of eight? Was that an arbitrary decision of the prior board? I don't know. And again, when the appeals board reviewed the property in January of this year, nobody went into that apartment to inspect that apartment. Now, if you're talking about five to seven or eight, if they were even at a considerable rate, why wouldn't they look at the apartment? And none of them did. Again, why did they look at seven and not the eighth? And then decide, well, they didn't make any decision, they just get out of here and go back to this board here.
This is the planning board.
This is the planning board.
Just one last question, too. All the units, do they have their own heat, own utilities, heat and electric, or is that included?
All units have separately metered individual heat and electricity, or?
No, no, we, I think we pay the electricity for five units. And three of the tenants in a larger units have their own electricity boxes and meters in their apartment. And I, we think we provide heat to maybe five or six of the units, with a couple of them probably doing their own.
Okay, thank you.
We put separate furnaces in, as, you know, as the people, well, we try to improve it a little bit like that. Heat, electricity. But we pay all the other electricity ourselves, all the bills, and whenever heating bills come in, we pay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ken Antonucci.
Counselor, did you say that you have the deed?
Yes.
Okay, does it describe on the deed how many units?
No, no, and a deed typically wouldn't do that, Mr. Antonucci. I can, I'm happy to give the board a copy of it, but it's a recorded document.
No, I was just curious if it mentioned anything.
It does not reference the use of the property. The deed simply references the meets and bounds description of the parcel. In reference, to the extent it references the building at all, it uses the conventional language. The land with the buildings there on bounded and described as follows.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? Michelle?
Hi. So from eighty-two to two thousand and five, there was a basement apartment?
Yes.
An eighth apartment, but it was never used?
That's, that's my client's, that's what the petitioner has related to me, that he did not elect to use that eighth apartment until around, his best recollection is around two thousand and five.
And it was just left vacant?
Yes.
Okay. When you appeared before the Board of Appeal, you were appealing the decision of the building commissioner?
I didn't represent the petitioner at that hearing, but I did happen to be present that night, so I have more knowledge than I might otherwise would have. But yes, apparently, my understanding is Mr. Snow approached the building department seeking recognition or a certificate of occupancy, you know, confirming it as at least a seven-unit residential dwelling. And that's where he was informed by the building inspector that, according to city records, this was only a five because although relief had been granted previously through a prior Board of Appeal decision, it had never been, apparently never been recorded, a copy of the recorded variance had never been provided to the city, and he therefore did not consider that to be valid any longer. So Mr. Snow, acting pro se, petitioned the Board of Appeal in the nature of an administrative appeal of Commissioner, of the Commissioner's decision.
Right, so they were looking to overturn the building commissioner's decision. It wasn't that they were going to be able to grant you relief. They were looking to overturn his decision, so that's a little bit different.
It is, except that the board did, that, technically, that's what happened, is that he had, he was seeking an appeal of the Commissioner's decision, asking for administrative overturn by the Board of Appeals. But, and they told him they weren't going to do that, but that they didn't believe they had, they were no longer the appropriate permit-granting authority, that the relief he was seeking to legalize it would not be a Board of Appeal matter, it would instead be a planning board matter.
Right, right, I understand that, but so for the record, that they were there on an administrative appeal?
Yes.
Okay. So the Board of Appeal isn't the board, you know, in charge to do inspections of apartments for compliance with building code or fire code? So I know that was represented, but it would be the building commissioner or building inspector that determines, is that basement apartment legal? So I know there was commentary, but for the board's reference, just like this board, you could visit the property and inspect the property, and you're authorized to do that, but you're not making inspections for compliance. So it wasn't that the Board of Appeal did anything wrong when, you know, they didn't grant it? It was not, you know, their role to do that? Just, I wanted to clarify that for the record. Do you have any information that decision dated nineteen eighty had five conditions? One, an approved fire detection system be installed. Was that ever done? And if so, what was, what was the approved fire detection system that was installed?
Well, you understand, you understand that that condition was one of the five or six that was appended to the appeal board's decision granting the seven units.
That's correct.
Now, all of that was done prior to me purchasing the property. If you'll notice, the letters dated April twenty-something from two different departments of your housing, whatever you call it down here. One of them saying that, yes, the thirty-three code violations that were listed a while ago are all cleaned up. And the other one saying that the conditions attaching to the appeal board's decision have all been... have all been straightened out. And there are letters in the file which we turned in, dated April of 1982, where the prior petitioner's new attorney, he had a Malden attorney who handled the seven units. And he fired, for some reason, probably money. And he hired another attorney, who was a real estate and divorce attorney. And that guy is the one who failed to, failed to file the notice of change. However, that's the same attorney who requested from the different housing board people, letters indicating that all of the circumstances have been corrected. And you have copies of those letters.
Yeah, we don't have copies. They're not in the file, so I'm not really sure what you're referring to. I have copies from code enforcement inspectors dated 1979 that say it's a legal five family, but it's being used as an eight. So I don't have a copy of that in the record, but if you want to submit that, that's fine. But I guess my question still is, what's the fire detection system right now in the building?
It's the electrical, the electrical kind, not just the batteries. It's a hot-wired system.
It's a hard-wired system? Okay. Because there's a red box out above the front door. It looks like a red fire box. What is that about?
I'm not really sure. It's got something to do with...
On the outside, there's a red fire box above the door. I'm curious what that is.
It's a horn.
It's a horn?
Dennis, do you know what that...
Could you, yeah, come up and give your name and address for the record, please?
Dennis Murphy.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Dennis Murphy, 25 College Ave. in Medford. It's interconnected, all the apartments, all the common areas. There's a fire panel in the front hall. That's just an audible horn.
Okay. So that's the fire system?
Well, that's just the horn outside. But there's a panel inside the hall telling you, you know, which alarm's going off, which apartment. And it's all, all the hallways, the basement, everything's interconnected.
Okay.
And just for the, oh, when we discussed about the egress, when the zoning board was out there, one of the deputy chief, there's a deputy chief that's on the board.
Yeah, Deputy Chief Sullivan.
Yeah, and he made a site visit, and he had no issues with all the egress.
Okay. So condition five of that Board of Appeal decision says, "A second means of egress must be created for the third-floor apartment connected to a common passageway, providing egress to the ground floor."
Right. That's that outside stairway that he's talking about with the ladder.
So what's the, a ladder in the staircase outside, that's a common passageway?
No, that's the second means of egress when they finally make the final draw. The deputy chief saw that, and he had no issue with it.
Okay. So I guess I'm trying to find out, did you comply, or did the prior owner comply with these conditions? So it's more than just that it wasn't a recording, we're trying to find out, was there compliance?
Yeah, I think that stairway coming down, that he was talking about the lattice, that's what they added on for the second means of egress for that third floor. And the last part of it's that ladder coming down, which I guess at the time, it was okay.
Hmm, okay.
But the deputy chief saw that, and he had no problem with it.
Huh, okay. Thank you. And finally, I had another question. Are you aware of the rental unit inspection program that's been in place in the city for, I don't have the exact date, but it's probably been at least five to seven years, where every time an apartment is vacated, you have to have an inspection done by the city?
I have heard of it, yes.
Have you participated in it?
I don't know. My secretary handles that.
Okay, because it's required to do that. So the city would come out and inspect the apartment every time a new tenant went in?
Which actually is a very good thing for the landlord.
Yeah, it protects the landlord and the tenants, right?
Yes, yes, I'm aware of it from that extent. But, you know, we have got one tenant in there for 10 years. He's paying, I think, $775. We got two more tenants in there for eight years. We have very, very little turnover, many for three or four years. It's rare when we get a tenant leave after three years, and then we increase the rent $100.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney McDonald, are you aware of their participation? Do you have any documentation? I know he said his office handles, the secretary handles it, but are you aware, are they participating in it?
I am not, Ms. Romero.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? No other questions? Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Attorney McDonald?
Just with respect to the correspondence that my client was referencing, that may, may not actually be in the file, I do have a copy I can provide the board. It is a copy of the decision, which I'm sure the board has. But it does reflect two pieces of correspondence from a code enforcement officer at the time, Morris Coco, as well as a building inspector at the time, Thomas Joy, reflecting that. There may be a little misunderstanding. There were, there were a number of issues with the apartment, apparently, in inspections, or with any number of the units in the building in the early '80s. Apparently, an inspection took place that listed 33 deficiencies that needed to be addressed to the satisfaction of the building department at that time. And based on the correspondence that was issued by code enforcement and the building inspector, those 33 issues were dealt with satisfactorily. And I can, I can provide the board with a copy of those correspondence.
Okay, but is that compliance with the conditions, or that's correcting deficiencies?
I, I do not read these as written correspondence, I'm sorry, written confirmation of compliance with the conditions of the variance.
Okay, because my other question, I'm sorry, I forgot, had to do with the water supply. That was another condition, that the water supply must conform to all applicable codes. There was a letter dated 1980 from the then-city engineer, John T. Kelly, that recommended that the water service be replaced, that it was not adequate for multifamily. Do you know if that was ever done?
Well, it's certainly adequate pressure in the building now.
Okay.
See, as those things happen, we just sign them up to the plumbers and take care of the job. You've got to keep the tenants happy.
Okay.
If there's no water, they're not happy.
But we don't know if the city engineer signed off on that?
If the city engineer...
I mean, you would know if you replaced the water main, the connection to the water main. So, okay, thank you.
So long. Whatever the condition was, we act upon it immediately to make sure the job gets done and we don't have the city on our back. If there was 1985, I had ownership of the property at that time, and it was certainly taken care of, to make sure there's sufficient pressure to all the tenants. Shower's here, you can't shower with no water.
Okay, thank you.
There were no complaints in all these years about a water pressure problem. So I assume that had to be done, I don't know if it was reported on. But there's no complaints. It's important.
Thank you. So if you have nothing left to add?
Other than submitting what, that correspondence that I do have, that apparently is not in the file, again, I'm happy to do that if the board would like to have it.
Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, you can either send us a copy, or, I mean, it wasn't in the planning file or the building file. So I'm surprised, you know, about that, because usually it's one, is this a copy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have, we have an electronic format, but at least for now, that's a high copy for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other than that, nothing further from the petitioner, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, David. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
I don't believe I do, but just let me double check. No, I do not.
Okay, see, no one wishes to speak in favor? Declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone in opposition?
Hello, my name is Ryan O'Malley. I'm the Ward Four City Counselor. I apologize for my appearance tonight. I came directly from the gym. So I'd like to start by saying that this particular property has pretty much been consistently a problem property for me. It is consistently unkempt. It is unshovelled in the winter often. And as many of you indicated tonight, it has pretty much been left to decay for what looks like 40 years. I do appreciate that the petitioner has said that he spent $18,000 last year on maintenance, but that's because that was deferred maintenance for 40 years, it looks like. I am in a, between a rock and a hard place. I think we are as a city and as a board. Because on the one hand, I don't want to see our neighbors and my neighbors put on the street. I also don't want them to live in what the petitioner has pretty much described as a fire hazard. I would like to know if maybe the board could ask the petitioner whether or not the tenants have long-term leases, or whether or not they're month-to-month. Because I do think that the decision tonight, if a decision is made tonight, would impact whether or not, you know, he just ends a month-to-month lease and has them evicted or has them leave. And I think it's important that you take that into account when you think about the impact and the detrimental impact it could have on the neighborhood. I think the people that live there are part of the neighborhood, and you have to think about what's going to happen to them. So I also think that it's important that somehow, whether it's a five-unit, six-unit, seven, or eight-unit, modern fire suppression system is installed in this building. From what I've heard from the building commissioner, is we cannot enforce the conditions of the previous variance, because it was never filed. And that puts us in a bad place also, because it's really a loser situation. We can't enforce it to be safe, aside from the normal building codes, unless something is done, unless some type of special permit is granted, or some type of relief is granted. But I'm not saying that you guys should do that. I do think that what's important now, I would recommend that this be tabled. I think that the thing that should happen now is our building commissioner should get inside the building and find out what is the state of the building. Is it safe? Is it not safe? What needs to be done to bring it up to code? I don't think we have enough information right now to really, at least, I don't think I have enough information to really know what the correct course of action is. But I do think the building should be made safe, and I appreciate anything you can do to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else speak in opposition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
No.
Seeing no one else wanting to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, do you have anything in general to read?
Yes, I do have a email, an email that was received from the building commissioner. You all have a copy of that in your package as well. I just need to find my copy to read it. So this is dated September 11th, 2019. It reads, "Please accept this email as my formal comments with regard to the petition for the conversion of 84 Linden Avenue to an eight-unit multifamily dwelling. The conversion would require occupancy of the basement as a dwelling unit, which was previously denied by the Board of Appeals in a decision of the meeting held on May 15th, 1980. I would ask that a condition of the special permit if granted would be that my department inspect the basement unit for compliance with all applicable building and life safety codes, and that it not be accepted as a dwelling unit until successful completion of that inspection. The previous Board of Appeal decision also required an approved fire detection system. The Massachusetts State Building Code 780 CMR, specifically the 2015 International Existing Building Code, which governs work to existing buildings, requires that any change in occupancy of a building will cause that building to be protected in the same manner as if it were being constructed new. I'm requesting that a condition of the special permit if granted would be to have the entire building protected with an automatic sprinkler system and an alarm system, consistent with the requirements of NFPA 13 and NFPA 72. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. Nelson Almelo Jr., Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer."
Thank you, Michelle. Anything else that you need to read?
No. And Commissioner Miller is here if anybody had any particular questions about that.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Commissioner Miller?
Good evening, Nelson. Just curious, so, I mean, obviously, you had gone out there. Have you, have you had a chance to look through the property? Or I know you're requesting going in and looking at the basement apartment, but how about the rest of the building?
Yeah, I've not had an opportunity to inspect the building. And I would, if I was there, I'd want to take a look at the entire property, absolutely.
Okay, and what would you look for? I mean, typically, in like a sale of this, I mean, I know we're talking about the basement apartment, but also, you know, egress? You know, making sure all the egresses are safe and up to code, or?
Yeah, I think, I think in particular, the things that were relevant to the previous decision, even though they weren't acted upon, the egress that goes to the top floor, to see what kind of condition that's in and how it was constructed. If, if the planning board chose to grant the special permit for the eight units, obviously, one of those involves the basement. So I'd like to see the basement unit and find out if it complies to today's current codes for light, ventilation, ceiling height, egress, things like that.
Okay, and likewise for the other seven units?
Yeah, the other seven units, we would inspect those also. They're less of a concern, because they're not subgrade. So I would expect to find them in a condition that would be consistent with, you know, modern codes. But we would inspect the whole building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when 780 CMR, when you say a change in occupancy, what does that mean specifically? If there's a change in a rental tenant, there needs to be a change in the sprinkler system?
No, occupancy in building code doesn't mean that same thing. I understand the definition you're applying, but occupancy would be the manner in which a building is used. So to simplify it, if we turned this building into the police station next week, that will be a different type of occupancy.
Okay.
So when you go from what today we consider, again, don't forget legally, and by my opinion, this is a five-family home.
Right.
Multifamily, we're changing it to an eight, that would be a change in occupancy from a five to an eight.
What about a five to a seven?
Anything three units or greater in today's building code requires a sprinkler system.
Okay.
So if you change it from a five to a six, it would still need a sprinkler system.
So if we deny this permit and it's a legal five unit, it still requires...
Well, no, it'd be grandfathered as, as a five.
Even if it were to be sold?
Yes. Yeah, the selling of property doesn't trigger sprinkler requirements.
So there's a benefit to us granting a special permit to, for that purpose of requiring? Otherwise, if we deny it, the petitioner could sell the property as is, it's a legal five unit, but it would be grandfathered in with...
It is. And I'd hate to speculate on any kind of future enforcement that my department might decide to take, and also say that we make a lot of these decisions in conjunction with the fire department. Technically, we could request that the building be turned back into a five dwelling, a five-unit dwelling. And the action of changing it from now, its current configuration of a seven or eight to a five could also trigger putting in sprinklers.
Okay, understood.
But that's, that's a speculation upon what we would possibly see in a, in a set of plans.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, if, if they sold it as a five, and someone came in to do extensive renovations, would that trigger the need for a sprinkler?
It could. It would depend on the...
The extent of the renovations.
The extent of the renovations, the existing building code, the way it operates is, it classifies renovations by their severity, level one, level two, level three. So you have to actually cross into a level three alteration before you're required to do sprinklers, unless you do a change of occupancy, and then you're, you kick right into it.
Thank you.
A change of occupancy is a trigger that throws you right at it.
Yeah. One last question, regarding the eighth unit, right, is it, is it acceptable enough just to not use it? Or should it be somehow dismantled, like if there's a bathroom, remove the bathroom and cap it off? Or is just not using it adequate?
If, if the, this board were to not allow that unit... then I would consider it to still be an illegal unit. And the way to make it not a dwelling unit would be, to be a dwelling unit, you have to have provisions for eating, sleeping, sanitation, food preparation, so. So you, you can remove any one of those things and you're no longer a dwelling unit. If you have no kitchen, you're not a dwelling unit. If you have nowhere to sleep, you're not a dwelling unit. So how our, our department typically handles that is we would make you remove the kitchen in its entirety, and then it's no longer a dwelling unit.
I was just curious if just not using it is adequate, but it sounds like it's deficient in your mind.
The use of it, someone staying in, it doesn't make it illegal. It existing makes it illegal.
Thank you.
Yep.
Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen, Mr. Nelson, I think you've alluded to some of the answers, but I just wanted to ask, kind of explicitly, if upon inspection you found an illegal dwelling, what kind, what other recourse is available to you? Or recommendations that, what is your authority?
Well, if anything that's constructed illegally, meaning without a permit, we have the authority to make you remove it. So that's the, that's sort of the typical enforcement against something like that. Unless we feel there's a way that a person has, can come and get relief either from this board or from the ZBA.
So that, that's, on the one hand, you would make relief, remove it, but on the other hand, there's options for?
This case is a pretty good example where I've obviously been aware of this building because they've gone, already gone through my office and, and through the ZBA. But where they did have this opportunity to come and possibly legalize it, I wouldn't make them rip it out prior to that. I don't see that as being a very fair way to handle it now. If you have work that's done, that there is no recourse. You've just done something illegally and you can't legalize it, you can't get a special permit for it, then the violation would, would state, "Remove it," and you have this law to do it, and we would follow up and make sure it was gone.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Miller? Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Very helpful defining some of the courses. Okay. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report, please?
Yes. I've given you the breakdown in the staff report based on the plans that were submitted of the eight existing units, the floors, where they're located, the square footage, the plans that were submitted, the site plan and the floor plans. This entire report is incorporated by reference into the record. You have copies of those plans. In terms of zoning, the property is located in the Residence B zoning district. The existing multifamily residential dwelling use up to three stories is a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's prohibited in this district. It appears to have begun sometime before 1939. The property, as we've heard, does have a history of being used illegally and without proper permits. It's been the subject of several petitions to increase the number of dwelling units of the property. The first was in 1939. The Board of Appeal denied a petition for a variance to convert the property from a five-family to a six-family. Then in May of 1980, the Board of Appeal granted a petition for a variance to legalize use of the property for seven units. The original petition sought to legalize the eighth unit in the basement. The five conditions are listed here for you. You also have a copy of the decision. I've read all of them already, except one of them I didn't, well, two of them I didn't read. The second condition was that parking be created on the south side to the rear lot line. A minimum of seven approved size hot-chop spaces must be made. And the third condition I had not read is that the basement apartment must be removed. The other three I had referenced previously, I won't read those again. You have copies of them. The decision was not recorded, as we heard. The building commissioner, I noted here, will perform an inspection. He would be the one to advise as to whether all the conditions are complied with. We heard about the case in December of 2018. I won't review that. So, planning and building records indicate that since 1978, the property has been used for eight dwelling units illegally or without proper permits. So the proposal is to increase the number of units allowed from five to eight. That expands the multifamily use. It's a multifamily dwelling use up to three stories. As I said before, the multifamily use is prohibited in this district. However, the expansion may be allowed by special permit as a conversion or extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use. That's how it's properly before this board. The direct abode to the north is a four-family dwelling, to the west, a four-family dwelling and a multifamily dwelling with 10 units. To the south, a single-family dwelling. To the west, on the other side of Linden Avenue, are two two-family dwellings and a three-family dwelling. Surrounding land use is a residential, the post office, and the park. In terms of dimensional controls, the building was constructed before 1934. Grossly violates most dimensional controls for multifamily dwelling up to three stories with five units. The property is considered pre-existing non-conforming. I've given you the breakdown here in terms of lot size, so the existing lot size deficiency of 64% would remain the same under the proposal. So it's, the use category would remain multifamily dwelling up to three stories under this proposal. The proposal to change five units to eight does change a couple of the requirements. But in terms of lot area, frontage, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setback, building coverage and height, all the requirements remain the same. The deficiencies would remain the same, so again, deficiency of lot area, deficiency of building coverage, and deficiencies of front yard and side yard setbacks. In terms of open space, the requirement is 250 square feet per unit. So for five units, a total of 1,250 square feet is required. For eight units, a total of 2,000 square feet would be required. The plan shows that 1,791 square feet exists, of, of open space exists. So currently, there's a deficiency of 11%, I'm sorry, currently, there's no deficiency. Under the proposal, there would be a new deficiency created of 10%. I heard one of the board members mention about parking on the grass. That grassed area is being shown as open space, so that would not be allowed. Open space can't be used for parking. In terms of density, the requirement is 1,500 square feet of lot area per unit. So for seven, for the five units, 7,500 square feet is required. For eight units, 12,000 square feet is required. The lot is 6,674 square feet. So it is currently 11% deficient of the density requirement for five units, and for eight units, it would be 44% deficient. So the proposal does exacerbate existing violations of density from 11% to 44%, and creates a new violation of open space, 10%. It maintains all the other non-conformities. In terms of parking, the current pre-existing non-conforming use as a multifamily dwelling with five units requires a total of 12 parking spaces, which is two per dwelling unit under applicable zoning. It would be exempt from the current requirements of one space per bedroom. The proposal, however, to create seven units, seven bedrooms and/or studios, would require seven parking spaces. Site plan depicts eight parking spaces on site, and the parking layout is non-conforming. It includes access aisles and driveway of deficient widths and lack of snow storage. So, finding required to grant the special permit, you would need to find that the proposal is not detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you want me to give the recommendation?
Yes, if you would.
So the recommendation is made prior to the public hearing and made provided the board does not make the required finding. The recommendation is that a special permit be denied because the proposal is an overuse of the property. It grossly exacerbates existing violations of density from 11% to 44%, and it creates a new violation of open space, 10%.
Thank you very much, Michelle. One question for the petitioner. Councilor O'Malley had asked if the seven tenants have long-term contract leases or if they're tenants at will.
The, there are some leases that we put together for information for a potential purchase last fall. We provided a list of all the tenants, the date of occupancy, the status of their tenancy, tenancy at will, under lease. There are, there are a few of them that are under lease, they're 12-month lease, self-renewing. And like I say, people there 10 years, eight years, nine years. I would imagine at this time, they're just kind of tenants at will. There are some leases, nothing longer than a year. And it usually goes from August to September to the following year. Nothing, nothing long-term at all.
Okay, thank you. Patrick Fitzgerald.
I see this as a very interesting petition. At first glance, you would think that you wouldn't want to add any more units, particularly two or three more. But when you hear the whole story here, I feel that the petitioner acted in good faith. I credit his testimony that he purchased the property back in 1982 as what he believed to be a seven-unit building, and that it has essentially been at least a seven-unit building for the last 39 years. What I'm hearing from the city councilor, that the issues are cosmetic and maintenance of the property, nothing with regards to traffic or parking, as its current use is a seven-unit building. I would, I think that petitioner's counsel makes a compelling argument that when you look at what the legal standard is, is does this proposal make it more detrimental for the neighborhood? I think that he would, but I would not be inclined to approve eight units. I would be more inclined to put the petitioner back into the position that he thought he was in in 1982 when he purchased it as a seven-unit property. But I would like to be able to see improvements to it so that if we were to grant a petition, that we could include conditions, not only to upgrade the fire suppression system, but require any other structural changes that may be needed. So I would be in support of perhaps tabling the matter to allow the building commissioner to get in if the petitioner were to so grant that access to give us more information to make a decision. So I would move to table the matter.
Before, before you make a motion, Patrick, I'd just like to say that I think it's egregious that being illegal for over 40 years, and I don't believe that allowing them to go back to the seven, having read the decision from May 15th, 1980, and, and what some of the city officials had commented during that decision, I think it's egregious, and I, I, I'm not in favor of allowing them to go to seven and rewarding them for ignoring what, what should have been dealt with 40 years ago.
I, I haven't seen the documents that were just provided to the city planner. The representations were?
It's in the packet.
I have the, the, the Appeal Board decision.
Yeah.
That was issued in May of 1980.
Right.
With the five conditions.
Right.
And then this petitioner is saying that he purchased the property after that decision was made, so that this, this, this ruling applied to the prior owner. And that, again, I haven't seen the documents that they referred to that said that those conditions were met.
The code enforcement. No, those were code enforcement deficiencies.
They referenced another document that they said that the five conditions that were, that were subject to this were satisfied.
Yeah. I don't believe that's what it is. I believe it's code enforcement deficiencies that were satisfied by, by Building Inspector Tom Joy and, and Morris Coco. But, but that, it's just, it's just, I just, before you make a motion, I just want to give people a chance to talk.
Sure, absolutely.
And that I disagree with you that this is less detrimental to the neighborhood and to the city in general. I just wanted to put that out there.
Sure.
I will circulate this. If anybody wants to see it or read it, it's fine, or we can read it into the record, too. It's, if you want to.
Actually, why don't you read it into the record, but let's hear from what Eric and Ken have to say first. Eric Henry, please.
Thank you, Chuck. I understand the, the angst that you guys are feeling with regard to that because, you know, on one hand, I understand Chuck, and I'm, I'm not inclined to support something that, I think that was quite easily, readily available to, to ascertain in the 30, almost 40 years that this building has been occupied. And also, given the fact that even with the knowledge that it was intended to be a seven-unit dwelling, it was intentionally used as an eight-unit dwelling. But I, I just want to really, another point of clarification is that if we were to approve this, if I'm understanding Mr. Nelson properly, would that trigger the improvements? As a, as an open question to the board, yeah, would that trigger, would that make retroactive these things and the fire suppression and all these other issues that we're discussing here? If we were to approve this, would that trigger those as mandate? But on the one hand, even if they did trigger, there was a triggering mechanism 40 years ago, and it did not happen. So I'm, I'm still torn, but does it trigger, will it, by law, will, by statute, whatever the case may be, will it trigger these, or these improvements?
I believe it will trigger the improvements, but I would strongly recommend you put them in as conditions. So before any, you know, motions, or if you're going to make a motion, I have several conditions I would recommend. I, I understand they're going to be triggered based on the improvements, but I would strongly recommend you put them in as requirements and conditions, and any restrictions, and anything you want to see done to the property, you explicitly spell that out in your decision as conditions, not just findings of fact, as binding conditions, so the city will have some enforcement.
Yeah, that was done in May of 1980 as well, and it apparently didn't happen.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any, anyone else have any comments? So Patrick, if you want to make a motion, you can. Let me...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to table the matter with the requirement that the petitioner provide additional information about the condition of the property and the interior, and allow access of the Bentley Commissioner inside to provide further information to the board.
What specifically would you like to know as a result of this inspection? Just to make sure, when they do come back, that you're able to?
Sure, if there are any existing violations. They, they've provided information about the fire suppression system. I have no information that it's, that's in violation based on what was required at the time for a five-bedroom. And again, structurally, there's been issues identified about the exterior, about the condition, particularly the lattice on the second egress for the third-floor unit. Again, not knowing, or nobody knowing what else is inside. It sounds like this property hasn't been updated in 40 years. If there are, again, anything additional that the building commissioner would like to see improved in the property, I would want to know that before making a decision.
So does that include code enforcement violations?
Yes.
Or something more?
Yes, in the conditions, again.
In addition, code enforcement violations?
And in the 1980 appeals board decision. Obviously, the basement apartment, it appears it was not removed. But, again, the fire detection system, the water supply, the means of egress. And again, this is an opportunity, again, if, if the board were to proceed with granting a petition, a, a permit to include specific conditions about improvement to not only the exterior, but the interior of the property as well.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, is there any clarification you'd like? Since it's you or someone on your team would likely be the ones doing it. Have you got a good feel for what, what member Fitzgerald is asking?
Yes, we could do an evaluation, not only of the items that were supposed to have been done way back when, but also the overall condition of the, of the property now.
Would you also do the rental inspection at the moment, or would that be?
The health department does those.
Oh, okay.
They do rental units, yep. We could certainly coordinate that at the same time, though. It's sort of a overlapping inspection kind of thing.
Okay.
If I could clarify back to an earlier
Yep.
point, it was, it was asked about, would this thing, would this change trigger sprinklers if the board were to approve it? It would. The reason for my email to the planning board was to make you all aware of that so that it's something you could factor into your decision-making, and also to make the petitioner aware, and to hopefully have you also, if you do grant the special permit, to include it in your decision so then I have both building code and special permit to, to enforce it both ways. So, yes, it will trigger it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Patrick's made a motion. Michelle, do you have a question?
Yes, well, I just wanted to write, make sure I wrote down everything because I will send a communication about your decision to the building commissioner and the petitioner. So the motion is to table the matter, to allow the petitioner to provide a So the motion is to table the matter, to allow the petitioner to provide additional information and allow access by the building commissioner for inspection. Specifically, you mentioned regarding the following issues, the fire system violations, condition of the exterior, egress, water supply, evaluation of overall condition, compliance with conditions of past decision, and then rental unit inspection. Those are the, that's everything I wrote down. Is there more or?
Patrick, did that cover what your intention was?
My intention, yes, but if there's anything else, anybody else?
So it's the petitioner has the chance to provide the information and you're going to allow the building commissioner to inspect, so he would also be providing the board with information?
Correct.
Information and recommendations. Are you amending?
I don't know what he's doing. Hold on, Ken?
Yeah, to give the, I'd like to have the building commissioner provide recommendations to bring whatever code violations or he sees up to, up to stuff.
So provide recommendations to bring property up to code?
Yes.
Do you have everything you need, Michelle?
I think so, but so that was Patrick's motion.
That's Patrick's motion.
You're asking him to amend it?
And Ken was who had weighed in.
Okay.
I don't know what you, were you going to go into second it or are you looking to just?
I was, but I think Eric has a question. Eric's got a question, hold on a second. Eric?
Just a point of clarification, Michelle. Did you say that is a part of, is to, you know, maybe I'm paraphrasing here, to, to meet all previous conditions that were from the?
No, the building, so that it would be tabling to allow the petitioner to provide additional information and allow access by the building inspector, commissioner for an inspection and regarding the following issues, the fire system violations, condition of exterior, egress, water supply, evaluation of overall conditions, compliance with conditions of prior decisions. So it's an evaluation of compliance. So he's going to make it, give you information, do they comply? Rental unit inspection and then provide recommendations to bring the property up to code.
Okay, so I kind of missed the word evaluation, I think, the first time.
Yeah.
Because as I understood it, you were, we were basically saying that they were going to have to rip that basement out.
No, this is, yeah, and I, it's evaluation of overall condition and compliance with conditions.
All set, thanks.
So that goes with evaluation.
Okay, Ken Antinucci.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second Patrick's motion to table.
Very good, Ken seconded Patrick's motion to table with the list of items that he'd like the building commissioners or his team to evaluate and report back on. Okay, give me a second here.
And petitioner to provide information as well.
And petitioner to provide information as well.
And you're tabling the entire hearing, so we will reopen the hearing to hear a new information. Do you want notice sent again to the abutters?
Yes, please.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Tawadich Gubrisalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
No.
That carried eight to one.
Okay, petition's been tabled, pending information to be provided by the petitioner and the building inspection department.
I will send notice to the abutters. Publication is not required. The notice will also be posted with the city clerk and I will not schedule the matter until I've received the information.
Very good.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman. Is the building being tabled or is it taken away?
Nope, just whenever we get the information, then we will then schedule it for the next available hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, I mean, typically, we're going to need two weeks. So two weeks prior to the hearing, we will need to do the notice to the abutters. So if it comes in the day before the hearing, it's not the next meeting, it won't be. We'll need a two-week window.
Very good. Thank you.
Also to have chance to review the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Let me. Status updates. Master Plan Steering Committee, no update since the last meeting. Ken, can you give us a status update on the Community Preservation Committee?
We're just awaiting the applications for the September, prior to the September 30th deadline, that's all.
Okay, so there's a deadline on September 30th.
Yes.
Thank you. Michelle, can you give us an update on the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee?
Yes. As you hopefully all received in the mail, a copy of the housing needs assessment, which looks like this. Nope, that's not it, sorry. It looks like this. I forgot to bring them to the meeting, so you should have received this, so you can continue to review this. And the committee will be meeting again at some point, reconvening to go over some strategies. There have been some, in recent, recently presented by the mayor to the city council, some information about upcoming plans to look at affordable, an affordable housing ordinance and also some other housing strategies. I don't know if any of you saw the presentation. If you haven't, you should probably watch it, there's a lot of information. So we may be seeing something come back to us sooner rather than later. No actual ordinance was filed yet, to my knowledge, but the city is beginning to work on that. This committee, I'm mentioning this in relation to the committee because this committee will be working on those initiatives as well, is my understanding. What else is?
The next one is if you give us an update on the Broadway Corridor Plan, please.
Yes, the Broadway Corridor Plan is beginning. The consultant is beginning the project, doing fieldwork. There will be some opportunities for the public to participate, property owners to participate. I will keep you posted on when those are. Nothing scheduled yet. And they are looking at the entire corridor from, you know, north to south, property, city boundary line to city boundary line, they're looking at the entire corridor. This is through a gaming commission grant that the city's doing this.
Very good. Can you give us an update on the Complete Streets Task Force, please?
Yes, we met on Monday night. The task force is working to prioritize the next projects for the next round of funding, so the applications are due this fall. So we're still working off the same list that we filed with the state a couple of years back now. That list is, of priorities is, is good for five years. So we're, we met the other night and voted on different priorities for that.
Thank you.
All that is on the city website, if anybody's interested in seeing the list, all the projects that are on the list, as well as the ones that have been done and worked.
Very good. And can you give us an update on the mayor's working group to review zoning ordinance?
So that group has, we've been meeting again, we haven't met recently. I mentioned last time, there's some work looking at some of the affordable housing initiatives and also some commercial rezoning.
Okay, thank you very much. Any new business, Michelle?
No.
Okay. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 9, 2019.
Yes.
Very good. A motion to adjourn? Those are the favorites, say aye. Very good.